Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 4th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the kennel today.
Come here, slow down. Our featured dog this week's been with us for awhile. He's a two to three-year-old boxer mix. He's been up for adoption since November 2nd, so he's really looking for a home. So if you're looking for a great dog. He's kinda shy and skittish as you can see, just kidding. But he's looking for a home. How many dogs do we have now in the kennel? We have about twenty dogs, so if you'd really like to do your family a favor, stop by and get a new pet before Christmas.
Fix his ear. Fix his ear.
Fix his ear?
It's flipped inside out. There you go. There, see? Oh, he loves you.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the service schedule employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez, welcome back. Nice to see you again.
At least you're seeing me and not viewing me. Thank you. I do have a number of personnel issues, potential hires at Workforce Development, Golden Acres. Also, I would like to discuss a completed labor contract with United Steelworkers America and the county engineer, and ongoing labor negotiations with United Auto Workers with regard to the Job and Family Services contract, and the potential of sale and purchase of real estate. All three subjects are allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session discussion. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, say we go into executive session, we talk about those issues that I've identified. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes on November 19th and 20th?
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize various payments to Boyer &amp; Cool Home Funerals Lorraine for injured veterans in accordance with the Ohio Reuse Code 5901.25. Thousand dollars for Felix Crespo Silva in Lorraine, and a thousand for Carl Frederick Dyke of Lorraine.
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve 2014 temporary first quarter general fund appropriation.
Some move.
Second? Discussion.
Yeah, actually, there's some communication. I told you I wanted to look into something at our last meeting, and just got the information today, so I'd like us to hold this for a week. That way I can review it, and then anything I have, I can send it to you in the email so we're prepared for next week. So I'd like to table it for a week.
Is that okay? We don't have a timeframe issue, do we?
It has to be passed by the end of the year.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Alright.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw.
And I withdraw my second.
Under Community Development or Contract Call, Kale Construction, Inc., North Ridge Valley, amount of $7,700, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for grant assistance to Twain Stevens at La Grange for a new roof. Eighteen invitations were sent out, three quotes received, this being the most responsive, and will be paid from the home repair account.
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
War Contract to Genmet Construction LLC Lorraine in the amount of $7,040 for grant assistance to Craig and Leslie Pavlich in Amherst for an electrical panel, safety alarms, and minor electrical work. Thirteen invitations were sent, three quotes received, this being the most responsible, paid from the home repair account.
Some move.
Second?
Can, for one moment, just for clarification, I know Commissioner Kokoski, on one of these you had some concerns, and I didn't have a chance to finish what you mentioned, because I thought that was the previous one, though. Was it?
Yeah, was it the Craig and Leslie Pavlich?
The, with regard to the income guidelines, so I'll still look at that. If there's, if there's a bit of an issue, we can always take housekeeping action on that next week. So I'm gonna, while it's been approved, I'll hold it to make sure that that's accurate information.
Okay.
Secondly, on this one, I want to point out that the safety alarms are not, safety alarms. Both you and I had a question on this, and I'm gonna have that terminology changed. Under the building codes that we have to operate, those are smoke detectors.
Right.
And I just want the public to understand that we're not installing safety systems and alarms in people's homes with these funds.
Right, that's one of the things that drew the red flag, and then I continued looking into things, and it more and more became apparent. But they do qualify under the guidelines, I checked with Don and...
Well, we've had a number of complaints. Sometimes people live in very affluent neighborhoods and very affluent homes, but their income guidelines are such that they fall within the scope of being able to be served. They do not count your home or any of those assets as income.
Right.
So lots of times people qualify that, that would appear that they shouldn't be getting that type of assistance, but those are the federal guidelines for everybody to operate under. And I just don't want anybody calling you and asking you why we're installing alarm systems in people's houses.
And plus, the last name is my maiden name, even though they're not related, so that, another thing that brought attention to it, too.
We checked that one real good, so...
Okay. Alright.
Anything further? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, approve and enter various nursing facility services agreements for hospice care containing ninety-day cancellation clause. One Mercy New Life Hospice effective retroactive to September 1st, 2013 through August 31st, 2014. Hospice of the Western Reserve effective retroactive to October 2nd, 2013 through September 30th, 2014. And Crossroad Hospice of Cleveland LLC effective December 4th, 2013 through December 3rd, 2014.
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreement with Emerge, Inc., Avon Lake in the amount not to exceed $8,600 to provide internet services to agency website for calendar year fourteen effective January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014, with four-year, one-year renewal options based on performance and availability of funds. Authorize Director Day execute on behalf of the Board and medical changes in programming content and increase with prosecutor's approvals to form.
Some move.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Transit, support Nawak as a designated recipient of the Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program Funds. These funds are appropriate proportionate for recipient in an urbanized area upon recommendation by Governor Naukada.
Some.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just like to take a moment to thank the Commissioners for dealing with issues while I was not able to be sitting in my chair here. I've been back for a few weeks, most people don't know that, but I just haven't been able to make these meetings. But what I really wanted to thank is my staff, my senior staff, specifically my right-hand person, Sandy Shozak, who kept us moving through all of this. You know, I gotta, I've had a journey, and I have a long journey ahead of me, and without that team that you have assembled up here, I'm not quite sure we would've kept firing on all the cylinders. They are wonderful people, and they demonstrated that repeatedly, and I'm proud of them, and I'm humbled by the things that they've been able to do. That's all I have to say this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have you back.
Commissioners, I would like to ask that we meet in an executive session. I have one matter pending and one matter of imminent court action that I would briefly like to review with the Commissioners.
Yesterday, I had a meeting with our new dog warden, Mr. Cordez, one of our rescue groups, to talk about how we can get the word out on the dog licenses renewals. Because of the economy, our revenues have taken quite a hit over the last couple of years, and we want to do whatever we can to get those revenues back up so we can continue to do all the good things that we're doing out there. So they are available for, right now, sixteen dollars for licenses, is that, and then you can still do the five dollars for the heart-shaped tag which goes towards the medical fund, and we also have the three-year and lifetime tags available, too, if you're interested in those. So make sure you get your dog licenses, we need your help with that. I attended a fundraiser this past Saturday at the Illyria Polish Club, and it was a Texas Holden Tournament, and I did not win, but it was a nice time. I met a lot of really nice people there, it was a really good time, good food, of course, Polish food, it's good. And then last Wednesday, the Young Dems had a fundraiser, which was actually a fundraiser because the whole theme of the evening was roasting George Corey, which was an easy thing to do, and it was a really good time, by all, everybody had a good time. And I just wanted to show everybody, I got my 2013 Christmas card from the President, but watch when you open it up. Bam! It's like a 3D, I don't know if you can see that, it's really cool. And, do they have two dogs? Because they have two little dogs running in front of the White House. Now, I didn't know they had two, so thank you, President Obama, for my Christmas card this year. End of my report.
Okay. Hope everyone had a nice holiday. Commissioner Kokoski said we had attended the fundraiser for the Young Dems, had fun with George Corey, which I'm sure everybody who works in the courts has fun with George. Also, Team Lorraine County met this morning, our board meeting, talked about our strategic planning and issues moving forward. We have scheduled on Groundhog Day, which is the annual economic forecast for the county, January 31st, starting at 8:00 AM at Community College of Spitzer Facility, and after that, the board members are asking to attend a retreat from 10:00 to 2:00 that day to talk about how we're going to move forward. Also, had an opportunity to meet with Jane Robinson, the interim Director of Children's Services, and update on how the organization is moving forward. I spoke to their consultants, because they are in a search for a permanent director, and it seems like they're starting to right this ship, so good job, Jane, and the staff there. End of my report.
A great holiday with family and friends. For those celebrating Hanukkah, I just want to say a happy holiday to you. And Commissioner Kokoski, I'm disappointed that you didn't invite me to the Texas Holden Tournament so I could've took your money again.
Yeah, I know.
But...
You made the final table last time at the one we attended, right?
Yeah.
Did you place?
Yeah.
You did place?
Yeah.
Good for you.
And they're working on that fundraiser again, so I'll let you know when that comes up.
Let me know.
Couple things I just wanted to go over, and I don't want you to think I'm trying to beat a dead horse, but the, with that program that I was telling you about where we can do the live video streaming, it's not just for us, it could be for all county departments. So Children's Services having a meeting, they could actually stream their meetings. Job, Veteran Services could do it. And when we have things, we could actually take it to the dog kennel and do updates there where people could use a camera, as long as you've got a laptop or a computer, plug a camera in, and do a live stream showing the dogs or anything like that to do self-promotion. It goes through your social media, and it's actually around $4,000, so not asking for a commitment, I just wanted you to know that's what it entails, and it's a great service because it actually gives us a video archive as well for that $4,000 annual. Have you been getting, I know at the different meetings, we had requests about a company that we use for contract negotiations. I took a look at that, we spend about $95,000 a year on that.
Well, they do personnel also, it's not just the contract negotiations. They do a lot of things for us.
Sure. But, looking at that, would you be, talking with mayors, and actually John Hunter Brant and stuff over there in Sheffield Village, going through and hiring a local attorney, or hiring an attorney, bring him on staff, in order to do it, would actually save us money in the long run? Any interest in doing that?
I'm happy with what the services they've provided.
They've been doing it a long time, they know our policies and procedures, and our staff, and everything that we have in the county for years and years. They have that historical knowledge, which is kinda hard to replicate in hiring a new person off the street.
And we can't afford an HR person, that's the problem.
Well, I'm just looking at...
Mr. Cordez, I'm sure you deal with this more than we do on a day-to-day basis, do you have any input on that?
Well, since I've been here twenty years, and I saw us try to put together a personnel department back in the nineties, and we did it for about six or seven years, here's the issue with that. I'm not in disagreement with any of the three of what you all said, hard to believe, but you're all correct in one fashion or another. The challenges are that when we had a department, we had four or five people in the department towards the end. Most other elected officials don't want to use Commissioners' employees to do their work. I'm not sure I blame them. Everybody wants to have their own control, their own, they're in appointing authority, they're an elected official, they have autonomy, they deserve that. I'll give you, for instance, right now, we're doing, we've done some personnel work over in the Courts of Common Pleas, and they use our consultant resource. Highly unlikely they would've used a personnel department if we had one, and they would've had to develop their own resource, and that goes for a number of, I'm only using them as example, not as an enigma. I went through this for years, it was very, very challenging. And then when it comes to labor negotiations, each appointing authority is responsible for their own labor negotiations and who they use or don't use. Everybody came to a common agreement a long time ago, that as long as nobody owned the resource, and they were independent to work with each department on their own, that they would use the same consultant. That was a big, a big push to do that, too. So you notice, we don't have multiple consultants here, working, and this way, we don't have, we have continuity in all the things that we try to do, from pay plans to class plans to the labor negotiations. If we were in a slightly different structure, Commissioner, you've suffered through this with the appointing authorities and so forth, as we've tried to do things before, we probably would have a centralized department, and it may be more efficient. And on top of that, even if we do a centralized department, the Ohio Reuse Code will task us to do a few things that we don't have to do right now, because we don't have a centralized department, which would be going back to the testing of employees before employment. It used to be that the Job and Family Services employees were the only ones that were being tested, and they were being, supposed to be tested by the state, they suspended that because DAS really collapsed down there and weren't able to do it. But those requirements are still out there in the code to do lots of things if you centralize and you build a centralized local department. The, so when we hear that we're paying $300,000, we're paying this, those payments include MRDD, Children's Services, Job and Family Services.
Well, the $95,000, that's just for the Commissioners.
Ninety-five, right, $95,000 wouldn't, would all in with benefits and anything else, wouldn't buy us a broken-down HR director of any quality.
Right, plus, I mean, that person would probably need a secretary or an assistant to do, you know, so then, there you go, then you're way over $100,000.
Well, just talking with other individuals, like, I'll probably shock a lot of people with this, but like Tom Smith, who's former Democratic chairman, he's an attorney, he does a lot of work, contract work, for municipalities and villages, and I met Tom, Tom's a good guy, and they use him, and he gives them a very good rate with doing the negotiations, so...
If they do just negotiations, it's not all the HR work.
Let me speak to the local element, too, because I've been through that over a number of years. Almost every legal firm that's in Lorraine County, one time or another, wanted to do our work. The outside influence that are brought to bear on everybody here are tremendous, they're huge, politically, socially, economically, family. We found that over the years, it was somewhat better not to have those influences on a local resource when we have to do this kind of work. There is, there is nobody influencing these people because they don't, they don't live here, they don't eat here. Now, I know I like to spend our money here, and while I am a huge advocate of sourcing local and using local firms, but the influences have been tough, and we live, we live and work in a political environment, and if we deny that we do, then we're foolish, because we know that how much pressure gets brought to bear on all of those things, no matter how much people try to separate themselves. We're fortunate that we have, when we send people to the table, we don't have to worry about those influences, we know they're not there, and we're getting, we're getting, we're getting something that is a little bit more...
Objective.
Decouraging.
More objective, it's more objective.
So, Tom, I'm not in disagreement with you. I mean, I can't be, because I was the guy putting that department together in the nineties and had all those people work, and my marching orders back then were to, you know, to build that department, but getting people to use it and do that was very, very challenging. And we had some success, but not enough to justify the overall cost of the resources we had. And again, I don't want to be an argumentative, which I'm just giving the history to it.
I'm just, I'm bringing it up for dialogue, so, you guys don't want to make a change. Alright. Moving on to the next, I got, received a call from the mayor from La Grange, and seven, I spoke to Mr. Cordez about this. Seven months ago, they sent in a letter stating that they wanted to leave the county health insurance. The problem that they ran into is they submitted that, they got a quote, it's gonna save them about $47,000 annually, but they were unaware of the contract that we had, the county had, with the insurance company, the provider that we use, that they can't negotiate with, you know, our clients. And they were planning on switching over, they approved everything, and then they were told, well, there's a clause in the contract that prevents this provider from working with them. They would have to go to a different provider for a year, and then switch over to the new provider, which is costly for them. And I understand why the clause is in there, it helps protect the county from this company going out and cherry picking.
Being raided.
Right. But La Grange told me that they were the ones who actually were out scouting and looking for a better rate, just because they can no longer afford our insurance.
Well, Avon went out and did it. Avon went out and did it. Yeah, they've moved.
Yeah, but did they use a different provider?
Yeah, they used a different provider.
No, they were unaware of it, and what they need is our permission to do it, and I don't want to open up the floodgates in order to defer to do the cherry picking, but what I would like to do, because it is such a huge amount for La Grange, is to grant the waiver for them, and then send out notifications, because I don't believe the other municipalities know about this, that there is a contract that they would have to go to a different provider. And I don't think it's fair to La Grange, because they weren't aware of that clause.
How are they, how are they not aware of it?
Because it's not in the contract between us and them, it's in the contract between us and the insurance provider.
Mr. Cordez, would you like to expound on this, please?
Well, it's $27 million worth of expenditures every year out of our things we do, you know, Commissioner, I'm gonna end up being at odds with the Commissioner twice this morning, and I don't usually generally like that position. Not only is it not healthy, but it's probably not safe, but I'm gonna do it. The, we had dialogue with La Grange last year, and Jerry was in that dialogue. The problem is, we have, we take everybody. We've got groups of one, groups of three. We assembled this healthcare twenty-plus years ago, so that all of these political subdivisions that were not able at the time to get cost-effective healthcare could have something for their employees. Six months ago, we took one person from a public entity cemetery group out in Wellington. I can tell you right now, I don't have to look, I know that we end up losing on that, it was, it was a family, and it's just the way it is, everybody's in the pool together. When, we don't, we don't give the experience on any group, because we don't look at it that way. If we're gonna start letting groups do that, then we gotta rate these groups individually, rather than as a whole. La Grange probably can save some money, the problem with MMO is they have their exact claims. When they give them a quote, they already know. They already know, so we've, we've had this problem with them looking at this experience and these groups going to them and asking them, well, can you give us a better rate if we do this, or this, or this? Well, MMO knows. Sometimes the claims could be really good, sometimes it could be bad, is how that pendulum swings, it's the law of big numbers, risk pools, and sometimes you pay a little more in for your group, and sometimes you take a little more out. If they're allowed to exit at a strategic time when it's advantage, they're advantaged, that's disadvantage to the group, it's an adverse selection type of issue. So we, we had some problems with that, and a couple of years ago, we told MMO they wanted to be our TPA, they couldn't write business for anybody leaving our group, and they agreed to that. MMO agreed.
No compete.
Okay? The, now I know La Grange wants to go to a different kind of plan, I think they can just get it with somebody else. And the, and if they can't get it with somebody else, that specifically says what I'm saying, that MMO knows what, right down to a nickel, what they've spent, because they're doing our plan for us as a TPA.
Right, if they have an advantage.
Well, they do have an advantage, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm looking at a different view. They, La Grange wanted to leave two years ago as well, and then they missed, they missed the filing on it, and you gotta wait six months.
I would say, yeah, when do we have those conversations? We had them with a couple...
May or June?
This year, or last, this year?
And then there was talks, they wanted to do it a year before, prior.
Possibly, I...
We have in the contract that you have to give up a six-month's notice before leaving the plan.
Oh, yeah, we have a contract that is very strongly built towards the continuation and the strength of the consortium that we've assembled, I will agree with that, so.
And with that, they wanted to do it, they missed it by a month, I believe. Now they're, they have sent us the notice, we sent a letter back saying that we did receive the notice. They could go to another provider, which I think they will end up going to another provider, in order to get the plan that they want in the future. And because they weren't aware of it, and I don't think a lot of our partners are aware of the contract that we have, I don't think it's fair to make them go through, change one health insurance provider for one year, and then switch back, when they didn't know it. And again, I understand why we had the contract.
MMO knew it, though, when they were pricing them.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, we go through, we notify everyone, and we give them a fair playing field, and we basically say, this is what the contract is, we're giving this exception, since it wasn't out there, the notice wasn't out there, we're allowing them to do it, La Grange, but any other division that wants to go through and leave, you're going to have to follow the contract that we have with our provider.
Yeah, but Tom, in regards to the adverse selection, what that's gonna do is then drive up the costs within our own plan here at the county and the other political subdivisions that participate. With them, why don't we just eliminate the self-insurance, just get a plan for our employees and leave everybody else on their own? I mean, because that's gonna harm the smaller entities.
But with Lake Range, they gave, if Lake Range was coming and saying, hey, we wanna do this now, but they gave their notification seven months ago that they wanted to leave. They were planning on leaving. So, I would assume, and maybe that's not a good thing to do, that we would've took that notification and planned it in our calculations for.
Tom, it has nothing to do with our calculations, as I explained, that's why I didn't say it did. It has to do with MMO having a strategically huge advantage to undercut our price. They, they do. They can go into a group, they have our experience and they can rate that group, they can look at that group for 10 years and see where this, where the cycle is. Every group cycles. You, you have your peaks and your valleys and you hope that you have a steady, a steady line when you, when you trend it out. They have that. I can tell you, there's lots of people that are in our healthcare right now as, as a partner, that they could, that they could go to MMO and, and ask them and they may be able to do better and then they wanna go. The, the key is that you don't want anybody going when they're at the very top or the, they can't go at the very bottom. And, and that's why we did this. Without, what they don't know or do know, they never asked, okay? We, we do a contract every three years. Contract's about this thick, right? You know, I'm not sure whether we had that conversation. I may have, and I may, and I, I never, as you know, I don't say I'm 100% sure when I don't have complete recall. I do believe that that was discussed at the table about withdrawing and we had those conversations and about moving to another plan and about MMO not being able to, to do that because Avon, Avon was also in that conversation and we had those talks with Avon. And I believe that Mayor Strauss was on, it was a conference call into the, the executive conference room and I believe that that was said. Don't have 100% recall, so I'm gonna give benefit of the doubt. So, who knew what or didn't, who asked what or didn't, there is some responsibility on their part to look at these things too. The reason, the reason they can leave and get such a great quote from MMO is because they have the advantage of looking at all the experience. As I told you on the phone yesterday and I go into the reports this morning, in the last 12 rolling months, went from 14, roughly 14-4 on the medical end of it to 17-6. And as far as it goes, the, the group is now 48 years old. We're down from 2,050 contracts to a little bit over 1,600 and that number's gonna drop again. We're feathering down the cash reserves and I don't find anything with, with, with the claims in there, it's all heavy utilization of an older group. The, the numbers continue to dwindle, you're gonna have to rethink your whole strategy for what you're doing here with this healthcare plan. So, if I seem a little one-way on it, I'm, I'm being one-way to try to keep this thing afloat for, for you guys. Been running it for a long time and, you know, the struggles, we, how, how many times did we all have a chat here and there about things with the healthcare and, and what was going on with it? So, yeah, am I being magnet, lack of magnetism behavior on my part? Sure I am. I'm, I'm worried about how I'm gonna pay the claims for you guys.
Well, like I said, the mayor contacted me, he wanted to know where the board would stand on it, that $47,000 savings for a small village.
Well, like you said, he can still get that savings if he wants to exit the plan with someone other than MMO for a year and hope that their experience doesn't increase for the following year.
Let me say this, just so for the record, before we get a misunderstanding out there, they're going to a, a high deductible plan and they're gonna do some reimbursements to the employees. So, I don't want anybody to think that they can go out there and buy our exact plan for $47,000 less. I mean, there's gonna be some structural differences in the plan before that gets out there.
And, and the mayor was very complimentary on our plan, it's just, he can't afford it anymore. And when they looked at it, you know, pretty much everyone's struggling in government and $47,000, that would mean a lot to his village. So, he asked me to bring this up. Knowing the mayor, it's probably not gonna be the last that we hear of it. I'm sure he'll contact you, but he wanted to see if we would be willing to give that release and let him go with the contract, so.
He's able, like I said, able to exit the plan with somebody other than MMO and it's not about not trying to help out the village, it's more about protecting the people that are still left in our group and not giving an advantage to MMO.
Again, it was one, and I don't know about the conversation that Jim Mayer may or not have had with them. He was unaware of that in the contract and they were planning on making the switch. The employees were looking forward to the switch because it was actually gonna save them money. And now it's at a situation where they have to hurry up and make a selection. So, that's why he was asking for our help. And that's the end of my report.
Board of Correspondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone looking to address the board this morning? Hey, Jerry, come on up. Hope you had a nice Thanksgiving with the family.
We should have had. I'm very sick, but that's beside the point. Good morning, Commissioners, fellow citizens. I apologize for being late. Obviously, I misunderstood the time the meeting was gonna start at. I have a number of questions, all stemming from one. I have heard reports that the county has hired, our Commissioners have hired additional security guards. Five, the number I heard was five. Is that so?
I can't. Yeah. I'll speak right to Jerry, this, I'll just turn it over to you. That's morning, Jerry. The, the, clearly we're talking about the, the, the lack of progress in the negotiations with the UAW, with the Job and Family Services.
Well, no, no, I'm talking about, did the Commissioners hire five? Are the county hired additional security guards? I can come to the negotiations and that with another thing, but that was my strict question.
Well, I'm gonna answer it that way then because, see, the answer is gonna be no because the Commissioners haven't hired any additional. But if we wanna go to what I think we were going, I can give you a different answer.
Well, I appreciate it.
Job and Family Services has brought, we brought in some additional security because we received a strike notice that the union was gonna strike on, on December 2nd of this week. And we brought in some additional security to be trained over at Job and Family Services because we only had one security person. And so, we brought a few in to do some training with them and also have them available to us in case we ended up with a large strike over there. So, they're not hired. We, we, we did expand the contract for that training and, and now we're just waiting to see what happens and we reduced that back, but we didn't hire anybody.
All right, now, that begets another question. Why, first of all, I don't know that when a union sends a notice of strike, that they're saying we're going to strike on that day. They generally say we're going to have the ability to strike as of that day. That being stated, it's beside the point. My next question would have to be, why would you think you would need additional security if a union went and strike?
Okay, let me, let me respond this way. First, under the Ohio Revised Code 4117, with regard to public sector negotiations, a notice to strike, a 10-day notice, which is required by 4117, says that the union must strike on that day. If they don't strike on that day, they lose the ability to strike. That is why the UAW has now filed a second 10-day notice for December 14th to strike. A little bit of nuances with the public sector. I'm not trying to be argumentative, that's just the way the code reads. Counselor, am I correct?
I'm not gonna argue over what the code reads.
Excuse me?
I say I won't argue over what the code reads.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lie to you, Jerry. The, the, so, when they file that, they're, the intention of the Ohio Revised Code is that, that strike will occur. It can occur on the, the day after or three days or four days after, it has to occur that day. So, that allows the employer and with the intent of, of the regulations to prepare for the inevitable strike. It's a little bit more contracted than it is under the National Labor Relations Board.
Yeah, 'cause I'm familiar with the National Labor Relations Act, okay?
I would never think otherwise.
All right, believe me, I am very familiar with it.
So, if you notice, we didn't do a lot, but we did need to have some trained security because the building was gonna be fairly empty and also we were gonna try to keep the building open for the public to come and go.
And why do you think the strike of the union would make it any different or any more unsafe or anything like that? I mean, we have, we have a sheriff's department that I would totally support. In fact, if I had to get added security, I would hope you would think enough to try to fund the sheriff's department to give us another deputy sheriff of that there. I'd have much more confidence in one of them and I wouldn't have five security guards, believe you me, because I think by definition, there'd be a lot more respect shown towards any direction given by a deputy sheriff. However, having stated that, I do not understand the logic that dictates that you hire additional security because a union has sent a 10-day strike notice. Furthermore, obviously from your own answer, while the 10-day notice is not, if it's not affected on the day stated, it's redundant. They just sent another and another and another. So, they're not, they could run it for another six months or a year, sending you 10-day notices. Is that not so?
They.
So, now gonna be, you're sitting there, now, are we gonna update the training? Are these security that we trained, if they've gone, they've got other jobs, we gonna have to bring in others to train them?
No.
Do you wanna see us stick with the deputy sheriffs?
I mean, let me explain. They, they can't file a second 10-day notice until the one they filed expired. So, they can't file one on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Well, I understand that.
So, there'll always be a 10-day period in between. Okay, so, once their 10-day notice expires, they can file another one. With regard to the security company, once again, we only had one person trained in security. The, the, the administrators over at Job and Family Services asked that we have some additional security and do some additional training. It was training only and they were there for the day, they trained and they're not there now.
Have you increased the hours you're supervising in the?
The supervisors?
Yes.
No.
You have, okay, I appreciate that. But I'm sitting again, sitting wondering, what type of county do we have that feels because an organized labor union is going on strike that they have got to up their security? It sends a tremendous indictment of the attitude that this commission, possibly with some exception, has towards organized labor.
I don't think.
And I've got to sit and state that for the record, that I am disgusted that anybody that I may have fought it for, a health-elect, would have an attitude that says, we need more security because that union is gonna go on strike. Unions tend to respect and obey the law. Have there been exceptions? Yes. On the parts of unions? Has there been exceptions in the part of management? Yes. But unions as a rule obey the law and I don't see any justification at the taxpayers' expense for adding security just because a union's going to go on strike over their benefits or whatever they're going and strike for.
You, you and I are both not inside that unit at Ground Zero to know what's going on. There's a high level of tension over there. I'm not there.
Created, quite honestly, from all the reports I get, created by the attitude of someone, the management that's over there, that obviously doesn't answer to anybody but God and the State of Ohio, it's only down in Columbus.
Well, Jerry, I gotta, I gotta respond to you the same way. What I'm getting is, is, is a different story, but somewhere in between our stories probably lies the reality.
Very possibly.
Let me add though, the Commissioner to jump in. This is not anything, they have the ability to strike, they're like, we haven't barred them from our.
No, it's not, that's called a lockout.
Right, we haven't barred them from striking on our property.
Yeah, that's called a lockout if you do.
There are a lot of this strike if they should, so we haven't done any of those.
It's not, let me tell you something right now, Commissioner, it is not you to designate whether a union strikes or not. It is their right under law.
Right, I, I say they have their right.
So, don't say, we haven't barred. That is their right.
We haven't said anything about stopping them off the property, putting fences up, any of that crazy.
Then why do you need security, especially because they sent a 10-day notice that may or may not take effect?
The Director of Ohio Department of Job and Family Services has asked for additional security.
The one that answers to God or someone in Columbus. And you just, of course, to call, I play, call manage that business over there, do you not have a right to say, no, we have confidence in the leadership of our local unions to contain their people if there is a strike?
There's a couple other issues. It's a very large building, that there won't be very many people in it.
I suppose, Commissioner Kayla, you will find excuses for anything.
Okay.
And you give the greatest argument, I being very honest with you, I stood up for the last time, I told you that I was opposing your sales tax increase, that you attributed it to something else. I think organized labor had a large part and its defeat too because of the attitudes that you have. And I'm telling you now, that you're making a strong case for us considering another form of government for the County of Lorraine. Thank you.
Anyone else looking to address the board this morning? Motion to go executive session is outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting.